America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Shanifel.
I'm here.
Mr. Cozer.
I'm here.
I have not heard from Mr. Akiri. Dr. Froska.
Here.
Mr. Spiegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Rust.
Here.
Special report seeing non-approval minutes. Petershaw Council meeting held on June 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
In a second, all favor.
Aye.
Pose.
I'm stating.
Five nothing, Mr. Lauer. Let the record show, Mr. Akiri is not at the meeting, now at the meeting. Audience comments, limited five minutes for non-agenda items. Anyone from the audience?
Dennis Ciccarelli, I live at 130 Oakwood Road. I'll fill this in. I'm here about traffic calming on Oakwood Road. We appreciate everything that's been done in the past, but we're concerned about no sidewalks in the township and on Oakwood Road. Now, I know that Officer Connor Wolfart put up an electronic speed monitoring system which tells you how fast you're going. He did that, he installed that on Saturday, June 8th, and I talked to him that day because I was outside, and he put it real close to my front yard. But that was a nine-day study, and it's 4,300 cars average per day that drives on that road. And that study ended on June 16th. But I think, and we, my wife and I sat outside, and we watched cars during this traffic study time period that really were reducing their speed. So I think the thing really helps to reduce speed, and I spoke with him on the 25th, and he gave me the numbers, the average speed, and how many people drive on the road. But I think it really reduces the speed if you see that electronic sign. I know it does in front of the high school. When I see that blinking sign, I slow down all the time. But I know it's there, too. So, and I think people, after the first day, they realize it's there, and so they adjust their speed. So I'd like to know if that electronic speed sign can be left up permanently to adjust the people's speed. And also, the second thing I wanted to find out, if we can install a stop sign at Alexander on Oakwood Road on both directions. Because if you enter on Oakwood Road from Alexander, there's stop signs, but it's only a two-way. I'd like to see it four-way. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Lauer, what are the requirements to have a speed sign put up permanently?
There isn't a requirement. It's really the township, with the help of the traffic engineer, makes a determination where to place those. The same thing with the stop signs. Stop signs, there are warrants that need to be met. We always rely upon the traffic engineer to provide us guidance in that. As I understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, we're in the process of looking at whether or not that road qualifies for traffic.
Yeah, we spoke to TPD about it. We did get a valid petition from the neighborhood for traffic calming. As Mr. Ciccarelli points out, we did do traffic calming back in 2009. We had a valid petition. That was the genesis of the speed humps on the road way back when. So we've authorized TPD to go out and do more track, speed, and volume counts, and their counters are not visible, they're incognito. Of course, we're in a public meeting now, and everybody knows we're going to do that, but nobody will see them. So hopefully, we're going to try to check that data that the police department got against some live data, too, to see indeed if there is an actual problem or a perceived problem, and then we'll go from there. So we, I'm hoping that he has those counts done within two weeks. We have a staff meeting, and Mike will be there, and we'll talk about it. We'll ask him about the warrants for the stop sign that Mr. Lauer talked about, too. There's sight distance warrants, accident history warrants and everything that he has to review, so to make sure that if we put a sign there, that it's enforceable by the police department, so.
So first meeting in August, would that be enough time to have a follow-up?
Hopefully.
Okay.
If not, you know, I'll give you an update in August, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Seeing none, new business, a resolution amending Petershaw Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
As council's aware, the Petershaw Police Department is an accredited agency, and as part of the obligation of an accredited agency is to review existing policies and procedures to ensure they adhere to current policing standards on an ongoing basis. What's before council tonight is a resolution that adopts two general orders. One of them deals with annual performance evaluations of officers, and the other one is an amendment to an existing policy that includes procedures for search warrants. The chief is here tonight. If you have questions with regard to either of those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending to Petershaw Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
Second. Motion, second.
Are you trying to trump our chief from speaking?
No, I'm just making a motion.
That's what it sounded like.
We have a motion in a second.
If we have any questions, they should ask.
Chief, anything you'd like to add to?
No, Mr. Lauer covered everything. The performance evaluations is straight out of Kalia, or I'm sorry, our accreditation. The same thing with the search warrants. Most of the search warrant criteria that we put into these is already done. Nobody is going to present a search warrant to the magistrate without somebody proofreading it, things like that. And all of the requirements that we put in there are the legal requirements to begin with, so it's pretty straightforward.
I'd like to share for the community the fact that your department, our department, is one out of 170 departments in the Commonwealth, of which there are over 1,200 different departments that are accredited. So you're certainly to be commended for the effort that, what do we do? We started that about 10 years ago, eight years ago?
Yes, sir. We've gone through reaccreditation, so we're, we've already proven to them that not only were we able to get it, but we've been able to maintain it as well, so.
Well, my thanks to all of the staff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven nothing, Mr. Lauer. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Is he allowed to go now?
Next item, award of contract to perform a library space assessment project.
So in early 2022, the library completed a strategic plan. One of the items in that strategic plan was to adapt the library's physical space to meet the organization's evolving needs. In support of this goal, the 2024 budget includes an appropriation of $50,000 for the purposes of completing a space utilization assessment of the Petershaw Library. Half of those funds are being provided by the Petershaw Library Foundation. We prepared a request for proposals. There were nine firms that responded. We chose, based upon the responses of the RFP, to interview three of these, and by far, HBM Architects was best suited to perform the space assessment project. This architectural firm, which is out of Cleveland, is uniquely qualified in that they only provide, they only undertake design and architecture work for libraries, and they've done this across the country on all different sized libraries, including many libraries that are similar size than ours. The intention of the study is to look at the library within its own, within the existing space and determine which, how best to utilize that. You know, one of the things about the library is that it was constructed in 2009, and little has changed with regards to the layout of the space, that in those last 15 years, much has changed in how the library is being used, and the intent is to better align the space with the current footprint of the building. So it's my recommendation that council award a contract to HBM Architecture in the amount of $45,550.
So will this include as a work product, construction drawings and designs?
It's not construction drawings, it's more schematic drawings, and depending on what the outcome of that study is, you may be involved in architectural drawings. But it also could be as simple as relocating things within the library to better accommodate where people utilize the various resources.
Yes, that's the problem I have with it, is I don't think that there's anybody more qualified to make that determination than our library director.
No, our library director's here, and she can speak to that.
I was hoping you guys were just going to make a motion before I had to get up here and answer questions.
Well, you're going to convince me of a yes, because I'm a no right now, so go for it.
So we've been making quite a few changes and kind of rearrangements over the past couple of years since I've been here, and I feel like we're maxed out at the point of that I know how to solve these problems, and I would rather turn it over to professionals at this point. You know, there's been some easy one-to-one rearrangements, like we'll take out the cafe, put the makerspace there, we'll put something else where the makerspace was, we'll put something else there. And we've undertaken those projects with the help of Public Works and with the help of the Foundation for Equipment. But at this point, I'm kind of at a loss. I can recognize that there's problems, but I'm just not sure how to solve them. And so I, you know, talking to HBM and seeing the plans that they've done for other libraries really makes me feel confident that they would be able to help us out. So I kind of feel like we've done what we can.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Lacy, but I think a perfect example of a space in the library that needs to be reimagined is the space that's there for the teens, that back area. You know, it was kind of creative when it was put in in 2009. It just doesn't attract those, that group of kids like it did at one point in time. And I think we need to look at how we're using that space and whether or not it makes sense to do it differently within the confines of that area, or should that group of library patrons be moved somewhere else into the library?
Yeah, that's a great example, so.
Can you tell me, I guess it would be Paul, what the criteria was for the selection committee to narrow these nine proposals down to three?
Based upon, principally based upon experience with the design of libraries. A number of these architectural firms do not have experience with regard to working inside of libraries. So if you look in the manager's report, they were graded based upon criteria, including new world project costs, references, successful projects of similar scope, and experience with similarly sized libraries.
So that's how, those are the criteria that you used to narrow it down to those three?
Right, yes.
So what was wrong with the $16,000 proposal as opposed to the $45,550? I mean, we're talking about a library here. We're not talking about, you know, redesigning some yumungus building here.
Yeah.
Listen, you could also say, what did HBM give to you all whenever you thought like that's going to be so much, why was their RFP so much better than CBLH?
I mean, just comprehensively across the board, they just have way more experience in the field. I mean, they had a huge packet of just project after project after project of space studies and phased renovations, and, you know, very similar projects in size and scope to what we were looking for. And so CBLH certainly did have some of that, and it was enough for us to choose to bring them in for an interview, but HBM, just across the board, when we were sitting in that interview, it was just clear that they, they just knew their stuff a lot more.
What about Kimmel Bogret? I mean, that's who we worked with for the Aquatics Center. I would think you'd want to talk to them just because of the familiarization.
And we did ask them to submit a proposal, but quite frankly, Kimmel Bogret doesn't have the experience of libraries.
Libraries are a pretty unique, they're a pretty unique situation for architectural drawings and for renovations and things like that. You can't just come in like you would with something else and say, oh, we'll stop this here, you know, we'll dump this here, whatever. Like, we have a lot of certain like square footage requirements for collections, and certain collections have to go with other collections, and it's just a really different beast than other projects that you might be working on, other types of buildings. So that was a criteria that I had in mind coming into this project, was that if we could, I wanted to find someone who had a lot of public library experience, and I think we were lucky to find someone that has only public library experience, and I've.
By spending this $45,000, do you think we'll recoup the cost and people use?
So it's not 45. The foundation will be funding 50% of that, so, you know, it's like 22. So it's about half of what was budgeted for the year, so I actually think that's, that's great. What was the question about recouping them?
Yeah, will these renovations recoup the cost of spending that money?
No, the library doesn't make any money.
Okay.
That's not what we're there for, sorry.
Why didn't you, if you were going to offer more programs?
Our programs are free. All of our services are free.
Any other?
Yeah, I think I need to speak up, being somewhat on the fringe, not in the library aspect, but how these programs get developed. It's a commitment of man-hours that goes into generating these fees. And the creativeness of any individual, whether he's experienced or not in library work, is of value. To me, we pick, I don't know, it seems to me that we're spending more money on this than we ought to, given the spread of bids that you received. And if you haven't told me that somebody was going to do twice as much work to get you the answers that you're looking for, and you've told me it's based on your perception of their experience that's going to bring the solution, I'm puzzled by that.
I mean, it is a lot more work that they're putting into it. I mean, Paul has, they gave us an outline of hours and who will be doing what, and how many hours are going into what part of the project, and it was certainly a more in-depth process, so.
Yes, yes. That, if you want to know what the difference is, the difference is the amount of hours committed to the project.
Is the foundation only willing to give 50%? Or are they willing to give like a certain amount of money? It was 50% not to exceed 30,000.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to HBM Architecture at a price of $45,550.
I'll second it.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Let's take a roll call.
Mr. Lauer. Roll call.
Mr. Rust.
Aye.
Ms. Shanifel.
Aye.
Mr. Cozer.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
I'm going to pass at the moment.
Okay. Mr. Spiegel.
Nay.
Mr. Akiri.
Nay.
Dr. Froska.
With the other lower bids, I think we should spend less on this. I'd be a nay.
Mr. Lewis.
So I'm the tiebreaker.
I'm pressured.
Well, I sort of positioned myself to put myself in that. Yeah, I'm not satisfied. I'm a nay.
So what would council have us do? Is your preference, we go back and, and speak to the other individuals to?
My suggestion would be, give us the proposals and let us make some assessments based on the presented materials.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that. We can also talk to the Library Foundation to see whether or not they're interested in funding a larger share of this. Okay, we'll be back at the next meeting with us.
Thank you.
All right, next item, a general approval for recording purposes is a Holsky Plan of Lots as shown on drawings prepared by Morris Knowles and Associates, Inc., dated March 1st, 2024, for Andrew J. and Amy Zeholsky.
So Kenesburgh AL Investors, on behalf of Andrew and Amy Zeholsky, the owners of the property, submitted a subdivision application to the township on March 14th. The township planning commission initially considered this subdivision application on April 11th. Council's deadline for acting on this application is therefore July 10th. The intended purpose of the subdivision is to create a parcel for the proposed Smith Packet Senior Living Facility. The Smith Packet Senior Living Facility previously received approval for this type of use by special exception. Before council tonight is action only on the subdivision application. Consideration to proposed land development will occur later. Currently, the Zeholskys own seven lots, the south investment of the McMurray subdivision. Two of the larger lots are, two of the lots are larger parcels, the remaining five are standard lots that are located along East McMurray Road. So if this subdivision approved, what you end up with is two large parcels, and then what you see on the bottom there, that orange parcel is affected by the subdivision by making it slightly smaller so as to create a 50-foot access to East McMurray Road. The subdivision meets all of the township's requirements. The only outstanding condition is approval from the Petershaw Sanitary Authority, and it's my recommendation that council approve for recording purposes, the Holsky Plan of Lots on the drawings prepared by Morris Knowles and Associates.
So long story short, this is just a lot line shift?
That's all you're doing here, you're shifting lot line.
And the fact, Mr. Lauer, that that, there will now be a 50-foot access from East McMurray where that green strip is, that doesn't necessarily mean that a road would be, could be put in there. We're not addressing that tonight.
We are not.
Our approving this doesn't mean that we're giving any sort of approval to a road going up there, right?
And where, that meets the dimensional requirements. I think, you know, in terms, as a practical matter, I don't know that you can get a road up there, given the topography on that 50-foot, but it meets the dimensional requirements for a lot.
What's between that? Like, if you, were that proposed, we must have proposed, where that little green comes down next to the orange, what's to the left of that?
Had a house next to it.
There's a house, and then the fire station.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes, the Zeholsky Plan of Lots as shown on drawings prepared by Morris Knowles and Associates, Inc., dated March 1st, 2024, for Andrew and Amy Zeholsky.
I have a question.
We have the second at first, I'll do it.
Motion, second, Mr. Spiegel. Any discussion?
Thomas Murphy, 111 Field Brook. So the green is half-acre lots?
There's no plan.
No, there's no plan.
We went through this two months ago, zoning, you guys all approved half-acre lots there.
Right, but we're not addressing that tonight.
I know, but does that?
The answer to your question, the answer to your question is this. The property is now zoned for half-acre lots. Mr. Zeholsky has a, has a plan in that was submitted prior to that taking to effect, which the township needs to, needs to consider. It's probably coming back to council at the next, July 22nd. Can I finish?
Half-acre lots, yes or no?
Well, you'll be finished. It's coming back to council at the next meeting.
July 22nd.
July 22nd.
So what does that, what does that mean?
That would be the mixed residential overlay, a plan that meets that requirement.
So half-acre lots?
No.
Are not possible?
No, half-acre lots are possible. They aren't necessarily, because there's already, was an application submitted, we need to consider the other.
So all the public meetings, it didn't make the difference with half-acre lots versus townhouses? Is that what you're telling me right now?
No, I'm not telling you.
Tom, that's not what he's saying.
Well, we want half-acre lots.
I understand that.
Period.
I understand that.
Thank you. I mean, you go around in circles, you know?
Steve Rens, 838 East McMurray Road. One thing I'd just like to ask is, I mean, this is like a piecemeal decision. I don't see the whole plan here. How, you know, how is this going to affect, is this like a step-by-step taking you down a road? I mean, shouldn't we see more of a plan before we approve this small change?
He's not required to under the ordinance. He can subdivide it any way he wants.
Okay.
What he can't do is develop it any way he wants unless it meets the criteria for that zoning there.
Okay. Just seems odd, because it seems like we're making incremental change, and we don't know what the whole plan is. It just seemed odd to me, I don't know.
I agree with you.
Any other discussion? Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Six, one, Mr. Lauer.
Yeah, it's a circus.
Request for departure from Petershaw Code of Ordinance, section 35, statute 2.3b, review.
The report you tonight is a request for departure from the township's code of ordinances as it relates to the subdivision and land development ordinance. That ordinance requires, prior to the approval by Petershaw Township Council, that subdivisions be reviewed by the Washington County Planning Commission, the sanitary authority, the township engineer, other cognitive agencies, and the township planning commission. And the purpose of doing this, of these reviews, is to ensure that the drawings considered by Petershaw Township are clear, accurate, and complete. Mr. Chen, owner of, and joint, owner of the one property and the joint owner of the other, has submitted an application for a subdivision. The subdivision involves a lot line shift that will transfer 0.84 acres from 166 Canterbury Lane Parcel to 410 Robin Hood Lane Parcel. The lot line shift is not a problem in and of itself, but what has been requested is that they get relief from having to show the sanitary sewer lines and the location of the sanitary sewer line easements. In all the time that I've been here, I don't know that we've ever granted a, one, that we've ever received a request, or have we granted a departure from a regulation that is based upon our process of approval, so.
What's the reason for the request? Why don't they want to show that on the plan?
Well, what they have said is that, one, there's no construction being proposed on the, on the plan. Both houses currently have public sewers, so they believe that that means that we, they don't necessarily need to show them. The sewer authority is requiring in addition 10, 10 feet of easement, adding to the existing easement without compensation, and the authority has a sanitary sewer on private property without easement. There's a small portion up in this corner for which the sanitary authority, yeah, it actually comes off of here. It doesn't, in fact, it doesn't show in this drawing. It comes off of here and goes in that direction. That sewer has been there since the 1970s, I believe, and even if there isn't an easement, I would think there's a prescribed easement by the mere fact that that, that public sewer has been there over that length of time. I think it's a problem if we, if we approve subdivision plans and don't show these things, because people rely upon it when they transfer property.
Well, and people rely upon it when they go look at a piece of property.
Yes.
When you pull title, you want to see the easements, right? Blame me. I don't see why we would do anything different for this gentleman than we do for anyone else who comes in and asks for subdivision approval. So I'll make a motion that we deny the request for departure.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
You're voting yes?
To deny.
To deny. I want everybody to be clear.
Yep. As the motion stated, yes, seven, nothing.
That's the inverse of the way to do it.
Next item, authorization, I'm sorry, authorized appropriate township official assigned applicant agreement and a highway occupancy permit for the Woodbrier Plan of Lots.
So the township has approved the Woodbrier Plan of Lots. One of the, one of the aspects of this plan is that there is a storm sewer that has to pass under Venetia Road to the other side to get to the stormwater pond. It is not, this is not a unique situation where we. It is not, this is not a unique situation where we have storm sewers crossing roads, including state roads, as a result of properties being developed. The state of Pennsylvania has taken the position at this point that no private developer can make application to, for highway occupancy permit to install a storm sewer, that it can only be done by the local municipality. What we require and what is suggested by PennDOT is that there be an agreement between us and the developer that stipulates that he's responsible for that crossing up to the point in time when the township accepts dedication of it, once it's completed and inspected. So, you know, it's, it's my recommendation that council authorize the appropriate township official to sign the co-applicant agreement and the highway occupancy permit.
So move.
Motion second.
I have a question. You're talking about that blue thing's gonna be what, a pipe?
Pipe.
Under the road?
Yep.
Why are we accepting responsibility for it ultimately?
Because, because that whole storm sewer system in that plan will be the township's. And that's in every plan, that's, storm sewers on your street, they're our responsibility. This discharge is across a state road, that pipe will become ours. And you have this situation.
We just did one.
In a number of places.
We're gonna inspect it before it goes in, correct?
We're gonna inspect it when it's done, for sure, and, and, I don't know whether this, I can, I can wait and assume that.
It'll probably be a bore, given the amount of traffic on that road, but that's up to PennDOT, what they're gonna allow.
Yeah. When we take over, storm sewers, they're all cambered, and that doesn't mean they're inspecting them.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowry. Next item, on the agenda, acceptance of 2023 annual comprehensive financial report.
So, in cooperation with those expect, so with the township auditing firm, the business department has completed the 2023 comprehensive annual financial report. Copy the reports in your docket, all council is doing is accepting it, recognizing that they have received it.
So move. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And the one thing that I would like to point out is that, in, in terms of transparency, one of the things that the, that the township does is participate in the three programs that are for, that are offered by the Government Finance Officers Association. Peter Township is only one of two municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania that actually participates in all three programs.
All right, payroll bills?
Yes, prior to this evening's meeting, I reviewed the payroll and bills, found everything to be in order, and knew that we approved those.
Make a motion to approve second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowry. There's a correspondence letter from Alan Pompey to Peter Township Council, June 21st, 2024. Anything we need to address with this?
No.
No. Any, any items from the minutes wish to discuss?
No. Nope.
Any report from the zoning hearing board?
There's one case that's coming in front of the zoning hearing board this month. It has to do with a setback, and this is not a, not a normal set.
Excuse me, Mr. Lowry. Excuse me. We're trying to, we just couldn't.
If you want, you can go on the other side of the door and have a conversation. The, this isn't just a normal setback, what this is, in fact, is a farm buffer that was created, and so it doesn't encroach into the side yard, but what it does encroach into is the, is the farm buffer.
How much, five feet?
Five feet.
Oh, that's far enough.
What does that mean? It'll affect the farmer in any way?
They have submitted a letter of opposition.
Oh, really?
Well, because remember that issue we had with Mr. Simmons and the...
And that's coming back to you.
Wasn't, isn't the buffer more to protect the homeowner than the farmer?
Well, remember Gary, that issue where he wasn't...
Well, yeah, I remember that, but I'm, I'm...
Is it a spring, is it a pesticide issue?
It was in that instance, it was a peach fortune, if I remember.
Is that the issue here?
I, I don't believe it is, I believe they just don't want to encroach any further into the buffer that protects their farming operations.
But see, again, here's the issue, somebody buys a house, knows that that buffer's there, right? And then they come and show up and say, well, you know what, let's move it back, you know? I mean, you could, you could put the deck further back, I mean, look at what you're gonna do, you don't have to put it further out to the side.
You could go the other one.
Exactly right.
There might be a door on that side.
Hey, you could take it further out into the back, why does he have to go five feet to put it into the buffer area?
Is this something I need to vote on?
On all these things in front of the zoning hearing board, council, by virtue of the fact that it represents the township, has a right to take a position. You don't have to take a position, but you have a right to take a position. If you do wanna take a position, it should be by vote of council.
Yeah, I, I mean, I object to the zoning hearing board being very lenient with regard to these intrusions, and I would take exception to the submission.
Mr. Cozer.
Look how far, you've got...
Well, that's a hardship.
Look how far he's got back, back to the rear yard setback. I mean, he's got another 60 feet there before he gets to the rear yard setback. He could easily just take the deck out the back. I mean, unless it's an issue of topography and you can't do it, I mean, because we can't tell from necessary...
There's like the access to the lot there, the one, like that sort of be like a wraparound deck on that.
I don't feel like I have enough information to...
You know, my point always is, we put these buffers in for a reason, and when people buy houses, they should know that they're buying it subject to a setback, you know, whether it's an agricultural buffer or just your regular side yard setback, it's just, I don't understand. You buy your house, you notice there's supposed to be 15 feet between you and the property line, or in this case, you know there's supposed to be 25 feet, you accept that when you buy the house, don't come asking for relief. That's just me.
I'm with Frank.
There's three of us.
I agree.
Yeah, there's four.
Okay, well, we'll let the zoning hearing board know as the council's...
Are we scheduling a meeting with them?
We, August 19th.
That's what that date is set aside for.
Is that, is that planning that night as well?
It's, we're gonna have a number of issues that we wanna talk about with all three groups.
When, when is this before zoning?
At the, in a week. July 16th.
Next Tuesday, July.
Okay, and obviously you can't speak to them before the, about this before their meeting.
We cannot?
Cannot. Because they're, essentially, they're a quasi judicial body, they're like talking to the judge, and you're in opposition. We, we're allowed to tell them your position, but they shouldn't take testimony outside of their hearing, or, you know, that's all. I'm just making sure that they...
Well, it's just like the, whoever complained about the farmer, he wrote a letter, that's gonna get in the record.
Yeah, this is right.
I understand.
Okay.
So that meeting with planning and zoning, I'm assuming that cell phone towers are going to be a...
Cell phone towers, we wanna talk to you about occupancy permits on transfer of properties, the comprehensive plan, there's a series of changes to the subdivision ordinance that have been, that have been drafted that we wanna put in front of you.
I'll, I'll give you offline on a, yeah, something that you might wanna consider including with that cell phone discussion.
Okay.
The towers.
Any other items for next gentleman?
I have a question, Paul. If I'm wanting to discuss a liability issue, would that be in an open meeting like this, or would that be in an executive session?
Oh, what kind of, for township liability?
Yes.
I think executive session, you probably have to be asking for legal advice.
So are we gonna go to an executive session?
If you want.
We are now.
I thought, do we have one tonight?
No, we don't.
You, you can ask for it though at any time.
Well, I just wanted to talk about something, but I don't wanna air it so that it's public because it's knowledge, maybe.
You have the right to ask for an executive session, so we can...
I'd just like a short, two minute, it'll be less than two minutes.
All right, motion for adjournment?
Second.
All right.